2020년 1월 1일 새벽 1시 30분 49초 12시 31분 41초 12시 41분 42초
Ms. Bruins, will you please lead us in our bikes?
In the Republican floor, we stand. My nation, my God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Van, if you would read or take the role, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton is absent. Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present. And if you would read the video statement, please.
Yes. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, January 13th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Anybody wish to make any comments, or I will accept the motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four zero. Next item, please.
The next item is presentation number four, recognition of outgoing Mayor Jeanie Bruins.
Thank you. So, as you know, there's five of us, and we're all elected as council members, and then amongst ourselves. Once a year, we elect a mayor and vice mayor. Where are you? There, thanks. So, we switched first meeting in December. We always use the first meeting in January to thank the outgoing mayor. There is extra work involved in being a mayor. I mean, at the end of the day, we each only have one vote, but they get to answer all the emails that get sent to the council. Obviously, they run the meetings, and then they get to be the mouthpiece or talk for us on all the public events. So, it is more work. I think Jeanie said it best, you're happy when you're appointed mayor, but you're happier when you get to pass in December and the end of your mayor term. So, Jeanie, I mean, there was, I can't think of any blemishes that occurred last year, so...
That's because I hid them so well.
Okay. Well, good. Good makeup artist you are, then. Thank you. So, we do have some pretty flowers for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lovely.
And then, we do have a plaque with a beautiful picture of City Hall, and Jeanie actually served from December 13th of 18 through December 12th of 19, so... I will get an extra day this year, because it's leap year.
Yep.
But you did...
No extra pay.
No extra pay.
No extra pay.
But thank you for all that you did. The meeting's ran smooth, and that's all we can ask up here. So, Brett, did you have any comments for the former?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much for your hard work.
Lovely.
It's not always an easy job, and you can take a whole lot of heat, and you handled it well, and thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Great job. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Jeanie, any final words?
Well, thank you. I just want to thank city manager Chris Boyd, and Chief of Police Ron Lawrence, and all the staff for really, all that you did this last year to make it a good year. It was a busy year. We had to deal with districting. We took on the mall management and let them know that we were in town and we were going to do things our way, not their way. And we had a lot of projects going on, and so it was a pleasure to serve. I love serving this city, and I am confident that I will enjoy watching Jeff serve this year. Thank you for all that you did.
All right. Thank you, Jeanie. And again, you know, having been there, done that, it is sometimes it's a challenge, but you handled it well, so thank you. Look for any pointers you can give me throughout the year, even though this is my fourth time doing it, so...
I think you got it down, Jeff.
Yeah, okay. All right, next item. Ms. Van.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay, at this time, we generally give, let the council members have a recap of what they've been doing since the last meeting, and since we only had one meeting in December, it's been a while, but fortunately, December's generally pretty quiet. So, Jeanie, I'm going to go back to you to start.
Well, as I was making, going over my calendar for the last month, thinking it was a quiet month, actually, a lot went on. A lot of it had to do with Christmas and holiday celebrations, and so I just want to acknowledge some of the ones that I participated in. One was the American Legion Post 37, of course, our employee appreciation lunch that we do every year for our staff, the community marching band, the Neighborhood 10, SOAR, they do their annual Bring a Dish, Make a Wish, where they put little wishes in a wishing well for things they'd like to see happen in the city. And the year before that, they wanted pictures in the community clubhouse on Sylvan Road, and we were able to get that for them, and so this year, they had a few that we made note of as well. And then, I did have some business. I attended on this last Monday night, the REACH Board meeting with, along with Jelaine Antoon, who is representing Rockland Academy. They would like to open up a charter school here in Citrus Heights, and I'm working with her to get the word out. And so, we did that. Also, on Monday, I attended the Sacramento Association of Realtors' annual luncheon, and I'm very pleased to tell you that our very own Jody Ash, who's very involved in her own neighborhood association, was an award recipient. She's a Realtor, did a nice job. And then, made a showing at the STA workshop this week, and then got a briefing on where we are on Sunrise Mall, and we'll be hearing more about that tonight. So, that kind of wraps up the month of December. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett?
Thank you very much. Not a whole lot going on, no meetings. We had our Christmas tree lighting ceremony back in December, and I didn't attend the meeting after that, so I wanted to just comment about how wonderful that was, and how nice it was to see the crowd out, how nice the weather was. I hope we got really lucky with that day, because around it was not so nice. But it was a good time. I felt as if, in traveling around the city, that the city was showing a little more festive atmosphere than it has been in the last couple of years, and so I was happy to see that, and I was also happy to see what looked like, sales were going pretty good. And so, it looks like people were spending money in Citrus Heights, and we obviously need and appreciate that. So, good things. On the negative side, the US Supreme Court has made its decision not to hear the Boise case as it relates to the anti-camping policies of cities, and so therefore, they have in essence neutered our anti-camping policy as it relates to camping on public land. That's not a good thing. We actually were very hopeful, and I think most people were probably under the impression that they would hear that case, and they've decided not to, so it stands. So, now we know where we're at, and it's not a good place. And so, as we come up a little later in the meeting to our future agenda items, I'm going to hopefully ask another council member to join me, and now that that decision has been made, to reexamine our anti-camping policy as it relates to public lands, and see if we can't figure out what we can do, as opposed to knowing what we can't do. That's it.
Thank you, Brett. Vice Mayor Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I enjoyed three glorious weeks of pretty much doing nothing, but it was back into the fire this week, back to work, and Sacramento Transportation Authority met this afternoon, and we heard about three hours of public comment that was carried over from the previous December meeting, and board discussion regarding a proposed new sales tax measure to fund road repairs and transit in the region, and nothing was decided. There's still debate going over on the expenditure plan and how it all rolls out. So, that, stay tuned for more news. I'm sure we'll wrap up February or March, and know where we're at at that point. This Monday, RT is meeting, and so if you're interested, go to SACRT for their agenda, and I think that's about it.
Thank you. All right, so last month, there was a workshop held specific to Auburn Boulevard, Old Auburn Boulevard, pardon me, and in particular, the Fair Oaks and Old Auburn intersection. For any of you who travel through there, there was actually a permanent fix, one of many that were being considered. That one is in place now. Going northbound, instead of two left-hand turn lanes, it's only one. In case you don't know, there's some city property there with some temporary planters. I think the count is up to 28 times those planters have been hit now by cars, and a lot of those are Citrus Heights residents, so clearly, they're driving a little fast. Hurt a lot of angst over some of the other proposals there. At the end of the day, what we come up with, what our General Services Department is looking at, is to make that a safer corner. Not so much worried if it adds a minute or two of somebody's time to get to work in the morning. We want you to get there safely, but everything that I've heard from the people has been, it's probably 50/50. Some like the fact that we've done something, some don't like it, and we'll see how it goes. Steve talked about the STA. There actually was a listening workshop here at City Hall last night. Myself, Jeanie, and Portia were there. We saw one other person, so that was four out of a town of 88,000. Not a great showing. I don't know if people came later, but this is a good, they're trying to get information on a proposed ballot measure that will affect transportation funding going forward. So, Steve, is there a, on the STA website, is there some information specific to this?
Oh, definitely, and I just want to be clear that they were responsible for this whole event, and so the city wasn't responsible for, and I didn't see much publicity on it. I did see something on Facebook, so...
So, if you're interested in finding out information, Sacramento Transportation Authority, go to their website and look up the new Measure A, and you can get some details on it. Met yesterday with the consultant the city has brought in to create the specific plan around Sunrise Mall. That project is being called Sunrise Tomorrow. They were interviewing, you know, council members, nearby businesses, members of the public, Neighborhood Association that encompasses that, and there is, if you want to find out more information or give your feedback, sunrisetomorrow.org is where you'd go to provide your information. You know, if you think about Sunrise Mall, it's 100 acres of blacktop that, if you've been out to...
Dot net.
Dot net? I like dot org better. Okay, don't go to sunrisetomorrow.net, or I'm sorry, go to dot net, don't go to org. Okay, I actually wrote it wrong. The I, brain coordination, was missing there. I wrote it right. I read it wrong. But again, we appreciate any of the feedback we can get. If you go out to that mall, it's 100 acres of blacktop and buildings, and it's almost like a ghost town these days, so we need to get it developed into a way where it becomes more of a vibrant center to attract people back, and, you know, probably have a housing component, but at the end of the day, it's still private property. The city's going to come up with a plan on what we'd like to see. And I just want to show this. Megan, is this on the, can we put this?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, this is actually just an outline of the mall, but the interesting thing is it breaks down the parcels by the five owners, and when you actually see the shape and see who owns the various parcels, you can see why it isn't quite as easy as just talking to one owner. I mean, we've got five different owners, and they're all big companies, so it's a challenge, to say the least, but we're going to work our way through it, and appreciate that we have lots of people helping us. So, with that, we'll move on to the next item.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted time.
Thank you. So, we have four speakers tonight. First one will be Sean Fisher, followed by Michael Ratzlove. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How you folks doing tonight? First thing I want to thank is being in a great country like this, and I can come before my elected officials and say something that you may not like, and the floor is not going to fall out beneath my feet, never to be seen up again. Again, my name is Sean Fisher. I am a Citrus Heights transplant. I've been here for 30 years. My wife has been here for 45 years, and I think unlike everybody in this room, we're all similar in the fact that we're all law-abiding citizens. We all get up every day, we go to work, raise money for our families, we pay the mortgage, we coach our girls soccer team, baseball, and all those things. And there seems to be this culture that's coming down from above, that's pressing down, saying that the laws are changing, the goalposts are changing, and you talked about the Supreme Court decision, and obviously, that's why I'm here. I'm here to talk about the homeless problem that's going on, and just really speak for my girls. My girls are afraid to go outside right now. I've got four kids. My little girls, I live down here at Stock Ranch. There's heroin needles. There's drug deals going on down there. It's, excuse me, but it's a shit show. I've been down there many times. I'm throwing things away. There's maggots. Like, we should not allow human beings, this is the most inhumane thing, to allow human beings to live like this. We need to uphold the law, because that's good for them. The law is going to protect them, otherwise, they're going to be out there dying. And then, it's safe for us citizens. My wife doesn't even want to go shopping anymore. My girls are afraid to go outside. And I don't blame our police. I mean, I thank you, police, you know, it's Officer Appreciation Day. I thank our officers. Unfortunately, a lot of this falls on you folks, and this is kind of, you gave a very passionate speech last time I was here. You said, "The buck stops with us." And I was like, "Yeah, way to go, Mr. Daniels." Where are we now? We need to figure this out. My fun time, you know what I do for fun? I go to Safeway, because you know what? You could walk out of there with $1,000, and I sit there and I wait to try to catch people. You know how many shoplifters I've chased away? I'm sitting there in line, and the tellers are like, "Well, we can't do anything." Well, you know what? I can. This is my local town. That's my market. I will not stand by and let that happen. So, you folks can do what you need to do according, and I'll do it within the law, and I'll be respectful, but I am going to stand up for my town, and I'm going to stand up for my kids, because what am I telling my kids? That it's okay to break the law? I could go down there and shoot heroin? I don't want to give that message to my girls. That's horrible. So, I challenge you. I know there's a lot, this is a big problem. There really is, and I want to raise my hand and say, "I am part of the solution. Come up with a plan, and get the people involved, and I'm here to help." Okay? So, with that, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The floor's not going to fall, is it?
Mr. Ratzlove? Followed by Dr. Janice Karpinski-Costa.
Thank you very much for letting me come up. I'm Michael Ratzlove. For the opportunity to speak to you tonight, I'm here to address the growing number of homeless people, homeless in our community, and see what if, is anything being done by the city council. I've had the pleasure of riding, spending time with Sergeant Evans and Officer Taylor, driving around this great city of ours, talking to some of the homeless in our community. I've also had the pleasure of doing a couple ride-alongs with some of the other officers in the police department, and I see the challenges that the police department faces. I have met and chatted with our navigator, Tony, on a couple occasions, and I see the challenges that she faces with our homeless population. I understand the legal challenges that you face as a city council, but if we do not, if we, sorry about that, don't get a hold of this growing issue, we are going to end up being the next San Francisco, Oakland, or Los Angeles. I feel for the police department, and it's a shell game they are playing, having to play with the homeless. They get pressure from one community, so the homeless, they go out and post the camps. That causes the homeless to move to another community, then that community calls and puts the pressure on them again. There's nothing, but doing nothing is not an option. There is a big cost to not doing anything, to start with the trash in our natural preserves and our parks. There's also, there's only so much that the parks and wrecks can do to keep this in check, the safety of our children from the used needles that are left laying around in the trash. For me to hear the kids in my neighborhood say they do not feel safe playing in their community parks or in front of their homes, not to count the thousands of dollars, the countless thousands of dollars that is lost to our community partners, Walmart and Safeway, just to name a couple, then the petty thefts, or the members of our community from their cars being broken into, and last but not least, the cost of the city for policing this growing issue and the cleanup. I would like to suggest to you, the city council, to work with a committee of local residents, along with the Citrus Heights Police Department, Tony Morgan, representatives from Hart and other outreach groups, to focus on the solutions that first and foremost work for our community and shows compassion for those that are in real need.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you coming forward. Dr. Janice, followed by Gus Cheveste.
Good evening, council members. Congratulations, Mayor Slowey, for taking over the next, good job, Janie. I am Janice Karpinski-Costa, president of Area 10, aka SOAR, which Jeanie did come to our Bring a Dish, Make a Wish, but I'm here tonight to tell you about how we spent some city money. And for those people who don't know, the city gives the neighborhoods an opportunity to apply for dollars to use within their neighborhood to improve neighborhood, called neighborhood improvement funds. So, we applied for and received $600 from the city. We then solicit donations from other people. Jeanie was a donor. Other people bring cash. Ronda Rivera is another big supporter of this program that we have, and we get cash, we get food donations, and then we put together bags and bags of shelf-stable foods and bring them to the senior community in our, in all of the city, not just our neighborhood, but all throughout the city, and we generally work off the list from the Meals on Wheels people, so that we know these people cannot get out and get groceries. And so, we, this year, in the last couple of years, we've done 24 households with 26 individuals in these 24 households. So, I have a short little video to show you about this year's, we went to 24, not everybody's in the video, but might want to dim the light.
Silent night, holy night, all is calm, all is bright, round yon virgin mother and child, holy infant so tender and mild, sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly peace. Silent night, holy night, shepherds wake at the sun, glory stream from heaven afar, heavenly hosts sing Alleluia, Christ the Savior is born, Christ the Savior is born.
Yep, good job.
Kind of hanky time. So, we leverage the $600 with donations, and I'd say the total value of the food and the blankets and everything that we bring is about $2,200.
And maybe you said it, I missed it. Are these in, just in Area 10, or is it in Citrus Heights?
All city, all throughout the city, but it's all Citrus Heights.
Good. Thank you for that.
And then, in Easter, we do it again. We kind of do about half as many people, and then it's the Easter bunny and the spring chicken that get to go around, and we bring baskets of fresh fruit and vegetables.
No turkeys?
No, the chicken looks like a turkey, that's why we...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And thank you for the program. Yes, and thank you for your support.
And Gus, you're our last speaker, sir.
My name is Gus Cheveste. I don't know if you remember me. Last time I came, bearing gifts, some cookies and sweets, and I hope you all enjoyed that. On behalf of ARI, we actually promote helping people, there are refugees and asylum seekers, immigrant visa people, with opportunities to acclimate themselves here in the city of Citrus Heights, along with self-sufficiencies as well. We do that by offering programs such as English as a Second Language, on-the-job training, and so forth, with a bunch of different services as well. But the reason why I'm here today is because, on behalf of Stephanie, ARI, and myself, I want to invite you all to our lunar dinner that we have on January 16th. I want to invite you all to our Lunar Dinner that we have on January 16. We charge plenty for the table, but it's free, no problem for you guys. I want to invite you to come on over with a partner, stick with other. We are going to have it on January 16 at 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Happy Gardens in South Sacramento. The address is 5731 Stockton Boulevard. It goes from 5:30 to 8:00. There's going to be raffles, entertainment, and dinner provided for you as well.
Well, thank you for coming forward. I will be in Portland that day, so I won't be able to make it. But thank you. But more importantly, thanks for what you do. I mean, you guys have been over there for a while. Very, you know, you don't get a lot of publicity, but the work you do is much appreciated throughout the city for the folks.
I also want to announce that on Christmas time, around the 20th, I think we gave away over 100 bags of toys for people here in the community as well.
Thank you for that.
So I'm going to leave you with my card, only have two of them left. And then that way.
If you want to, go ahead. I'll take them up here. Thank you.
On your way back to Mike, could you explain the acronym for those that may not know what ARI stands for? Thank you.
Excuse my dress because I just came from Planet Fitness, you know? I was off at 5:00. I wanted to get my workout on. But ARI stands for Asian Resources Incorporated. We're not just for Asian people. It's for all cultures, all nationalities. But it was founded by a person that started this foundation in the '80s for Cambodian refugees. So if you have any questions, we're located right next to Sunrise Mall. And I will be at the meeting at the Sunrise Mall as well.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else who didn't have an opportunity to fill out a speaker card, not seen anybody rushing up to fill them out? We'll move on to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar, items five and six.
Move approval of consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second to move the two items on consent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, public hearing, there are none. The next item, regular calendar, item number seven. The subject is liquidation of Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District Economic Development Bank credits and allocation of funds. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the liquidation of the sewer credits.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Slowey, members of city council. I am Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager for the City of Citrus Heights. I'm here before you this evening with a point of quick administrative follow-up related to the Sunrise Mall specific plan process that Mayor Slowey touched on earlier. If you may recall, my colleague Planning Manager Casey Kempenar and I were before you at a city council meeting on October 11, where we presented a recommendation to hire the consultant firm Gensler. You unanimously approved hiring Gensler. And they are now on board and working very hard for us and collaborating with our community. As part of that plan, we presented a funding solution where in the mix of the funding plan was an allocation to liquidate our sewer credit account. And I'd like to give some quick information on what that is for folks listening in. We partnered with Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District for the establishment of an economic development treatment capacity bank. Those are credits of a finite amount that can be allocated to reduce sewer impact fees and also used for economic development purposes as a city and its council sees fit. So some quick facts here. As of this month, January 2020, we have 298 credits remaining. That is a value of about $436,000. An important point that I would like to share now is that the fund will expire on December 31 of this year. So liquidation is a necessity at the end of this year. We're just getting a little bit of a head start on it with a very important economic development project for our city. We covered all of that. So with that, I'd like to ask that council approve resolution to liquidate the Economic Development Bank credits for allocation of funds and open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for Megan? What's the pleasure of the council?
I move approval. Happy that these funds are available.
We have a motion and a second. Before we take a vote, I will say that, you know, thank you, Janie. Janie sat on the sewer board for.
As long as they've been on the.
God, 16 years? 18, sorry. Probably knows more about sewers than you and I ever want to know. But she was the one who fought to get these sewer credits here in the front. And I don't want to say it's free money because it's not technically free, but we're going to spend it, so. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Next item. Madam Clerk?
The next item is item eight. The subject is appointments to the regional boards and committees. And I will be giving the presentation. So the Citrus Heights City Council represents the city on various regional boards and committees throughout Sacramento County as part of their duties as council members. And each January, the mayor makes appointments to the regional boards and committees. And four of them require a formal resolution by the city council. Before you is the recommended list of appointments to the regional boards, liaisons to local entities, and the council ad hoc subcommittees for council consideration.
Thank you, Amy. So, you know, Amy says that the mayor makes appointments, but we actually go out and ask the council members what they would prefer and more importantly, what they would not prefer. So I'll go ahead and run through them really quick, and then we'll take our resolutions. So the SAC Metro Cable primary will be Councilmember Middleton and Vice Mayor Miller as the alternate. Library Authority, myself, and Councilmember Middleton as alternate. Sewer District, Janie's going to stay strong there and stay on that. Brett will be the alternate. Sanitation District, Regional County San, again, they meet at the same time. Again, Janie and Brett. STA, Vice Mayor Miller, Councilmember Middleton, alternate. SECOG, Sacramento Area Council of Governments, myself and Janie as the alternate. RT, Regional Transit, Vice Mayor Miller, myself as alternate. And I'll have you know, in 10 years, I've gone to four meetings. Steve doesn't miss that much, so thank God for that. Sacramento Metro Air Quality District, Brett will be primary, Steve will be alternate. Now Sacramento Steps Forward Homeless Policy Council. That is actually a regional forum that is being set up downtown with all the local jurisdictions, including, you know, the county and the city. We had TBD here. It's actually going to be Portia Middleton. The reason we had TBD is I hadn't had an opportunity to speak to her before we needed to get this printed. So I have spoken to her, and she is willing to take that on for us. So then internally, what we call liaison to local entities, these are what we call council two-by-twos. We can't have three, well, we could have three. But if we have three, we have to agendize and give them certain amount of notice where if there are two, it's legal to schedule them and hold them. So Education Committee is Janie and myself. SAC Metro Fire is myself and Portia. Intergovernmental Relations, Steve and Brett. Sunrise Marketplace, Janie and Portia. Mayor's Board, Chair Forum Collaborative, it's always the mayor and the vice mayor. And then ad hoc committees, there's two. Finance is myself and Steve. And Quality of Life is Janie and Steve. So thank you in advance for my council members, for fellow council members, for sitting on these. And just so you all know, these usually either meet in the evening or during the day. And they are addition to our council duties. So they do take up quite a bit of time. So thank you for that. And as I look at the agenda, four of them require formal action. Five, I guess. So if somebody would like to motion each one individually, we'll vote on them and get moving.
I'll start. So I move that we approve a resolution of the city council to appoint as a representative of the Sacramento Air Quality Management Board, who's that one?
Brett.
Brett Daniels to serve in that capacity with Steve Miller as the alternate. One at a time, right?
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four zero.
Janie, I could do this one. A resolution. I move a resolution of the city council of the City of Citrus Heights to appoint Janie Bruins to serve as a representative on the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District and Sacramento Area Sewer District Boards of Directors. And Brett. Brett Daniels as the alternate to that board.
It's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four zero.
Then I will move a resolution of the city council of the City of Citrus Heights to appoint, to serve as a representative on the Sacramento Transportation Authority STA Board, Steve Miller as the primary and Portia Middleton as the alternate.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four zero. And how about the last one?
Go, Steve.
Oh, go. Resolution of the city council, appointing a Citrus Heights member to serve as director. And that would be Mayor Slowey, correct?
Yep.
And Janie Bruins is the alternate.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four zero. Thank you all. Next item, please.
Next item is Department Reports, item number nine. The subject is Sunrise Mall specific plan project update.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Casey Kempenar, Planning Manager. And I'm here with Megan Huber, the Economic and Communications Manager. And we're just going to give you a brief update about Sunrise Mall, where we've been in the last few months. We're really excited about this important project. It's been exciting talking to different folks and learning what their thoughts, their concerns, and their ideas, as well as their nostalgic memories they have about the mall over the years. So I'm going to give you a brief update. So back in October, council directed us to hire Gensler. Gensler is an international architecture planning firm that is really the premier experts in mall redevelopment in California and other places in the country. They do work all over the state, and they successfully have worked to redevelop malls. And they're good at what they do, which is why we've hired them. You've all met Nate Cherry. He's the project manager. He's in the audience if you have any questions. But you've all had a chance to interact with them, and we've been very happy with Gensler. I'll turn to Megan.
And once Gensler was onboarded, we immediately introduced them to the five owners of our 100-acre Sunrise Mall site and engaged. So there was certainly an educational process around what a specific plan is, what it will look like, what the outcomes will be. We took time to understand their plans and vision for the future and talked about how all of that information can funnel together into a collaboration.
Yeah. And then since then, we've also been doing a lot of background analysis. We've been looking at traffic patterns. We've been looking at what the infrastructure can support and doing a lot of data gathering to figure out, help guide our future planning efforts. So we've been working on that, as well as the stakeholder outreach, which Megan will tell you about.
Just this week, we completed three very full immersive days of stakeholder interviews. So once we had a chance to touch base with our owners, we then move on to engaging the immediate Sunrise Mall community. The definition of stakeholder, for all intents and purposes of this project, is folks who are businesses, organizations, community members who are affected by, have a relationship with, live in the business ecosystem of the mall, right? So folks who are affected by the mall, but not necessarily immediate owners of it. When Casey and I sat before you on October 11 to onboard Gensler and start this process, we made a promise and a commitment to you to really engage our community and maximize outreach. So we could tell you what that looks like, but what we'd like to do is show you.
The City of Citrus Heights is creating a specific plan for Sunrise Mall to define a vision for future redevelopment of the site. This week, we hosted stakeholder interviews as an opportunity for the project team to get to know community leaders, hear ideas, and share information.
And I want to commend the city on taking the step of creating a specific plan. A lot of cities face similar challenges. But Citrus Heights has taken the lead and is addressing these issues by bringing together mall owners, community members, potential developers. And that's going to position Citrus Heights to re-envision the mall and create a great new space and succeed.
I'm excited that the City of Citrus Heights is taking the initiative to take on such a monumental project.
We're excited about this project because we think it offers a lot of opportunities for regional transit with increased ridership on our bus routes.
We see this as a great opportunity to make it a more livable, walkable, transit-friendly community.
I'm very excited about the Sunrise Mall specific plan because I think it shows extreme proactive efforts by the community to set a vision.
As you may know, our world is changing. And people are beginning to buy things online, and retail is changing. In anticipation of that, our Citrus Heights leadership is doing some great things for us to make plans, to get out ahead of it, and make it easier for investors to come into Citrus Heights and make amazing things happen for us.
What has really struck me as we've interviewed stakeholders from city officials to residents is the sense of pride people have in their community of Citrus Heights.
I am a 40-year resident of the City of Citrus Heights. I think I'm one of the people who have enjoyed the mall growing up. One of the things that I'm really looking forward to seeing is some events for families.
I think a big thing and the excitement around Sunrise Mall is looking at the analysis of what really could be on this site. Introducing multiple uses on the site. Right now, it's just a retail mall, but looking at the potential is huge for the area.
We are developing the Mitchell Farms Project here in Citrus Heights. We're extremely excited about the mall redevelopment project and the plan that is being developed here in the City of Citrus Heights. We're excited to be a partner in that.
I'm really happy to be here today. It's our major anchor. It's nearly 100 acres in the bid, and it has such huge potential. I think it's important to note that we get a lot of questions about the mall and its future and whether it's open. And the mall is open. There are many stores, more than 60 stores.
What I'm most excited about is the future of Sunrise Mall and restoring it to its former prominence and excitement that a lot of people have some really vibrant memories of the mall.
I'm really excited about being asked to collaborate in partnership with the City of Citrus Heights.
It's an exciting time for Citrus Heights and an exciting time for the Park District.
It's very important to us to involve everyone in this visioning process as we move forward.
Now that we've collected ideas from our stakeholders, we're ready to engage the community. Residents can visit sunrisetomorrow.net or attend our community workshop on February 11 to give feedback and learn more. Our website is interactive and fun, so head online and check it out.
Thank you for that. So one more time, the community meeting for this is Tuesday, February 11, 5:30 to whenever, at the old Sears Building in Sunrise Mall.
Almost, Mayor Slowey. So the Community Vision Workshop will be on February 11 from 5 to 7 in the old Sears Building onsite at Sunrise Mall. So this is, we're so excited about it. It's a really great way to harness all of the energy around people's excitement for Sunrise Mall. The workshop will be interactive and provide a lot of exciting activities and great ways for folks to give feedback. In addition to that, because community outreach is a guiding principle for us, we wanted to make sure. to make sure that in-person workshops were not the only way for people to engage, which is why it was important to us to create sunrisetomorrow.net as a place for people to engage online. So, our goal is certainly to share as much information as possible about the project, but we also want to make sure that people can give feedback on this site. So, that last part of the video that you saw scrolling through ideas, those are ideas that are actually on our website right now, from our community. The website's been launched for about 24 hours, and we've already had a great amount of clicks. About 70 people have signed up for updates, there's about 30 comments already on the page, so we're really excited to continue to use the tool. So again, that is sunrisetomorrow.net. And then to summarize one more time, everyone is invited to the Community Vision Workshop on February 11th. Council, you will see us again for a joint Planning Commission and City Council Study Session on March 12th. That's where we will review early findings with you, and really dig in and start our visioning discussion. We also want to make sure that folks here this evening, as well as viewing at home, know that they can sign up for updates throughout the city, not just the mall, but a great way to stay plugged into the city in general, as well as our Sunrise Tomorrow project is to visit citrusheights.net/e-newsletter to sign up for updates.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, soon, Megan. Next item, Amy.
Next item is Department Report Number 10, the subject is Youth and Family Program Update.
As our esteemed members of the CHPD family are coming up, I would be remiss if I didn't say, "Thank you, it is Officer Appreciation Day." So, thank you to all members of the CHPD, and I also see you brought some friends.
We did.
In the audience. I, I hope that wasn't hazing on their part, making them come to a City Council meeting.
They were nice enough to volunteer.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thanks for having us. I'm Officer Chow, and this is Officer Hancock, and we're here to provide an update on some of the things that Youth and Family Services has been working on in 2019. And as you mentioned, we also have a handful of our Police Explorers and our Public Safety Pathway interns as well, and they're nice enough to join us, sitting in front of and then adjacent to Lieutenant Frye. All right. So, for 2019, to begin with, we were very excited to see Officer Hancock transition out of our operations unit, and then to have her assigned to Youth and Family Services as our new School Resource Officer.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Officer Hancock, and a long-term goal of mine was to become a School Resource Officer, and I am super excited to be a part of this unit.
All right, so for our Public Safety Program, to give you some background, this is our second year partnering with the San Juan Unified School District and their Public Safety Academy that's stationed at Mesa Verde High School. This program has three levels, beginner, and intermediate, and an advanced level. So, the advanced class is who we have here. So, these are our seniors that not only come from Mesa Verde, but several other high schools throughout the district that take part in the advanced level of this class. In the beginning of the year in this program, they leave their schools if they're not out of Mesa, and they, they report to Mesa Verde, and that's where we receive, in really all three levels, the academic and the scenario-based training that this program is, is all about. But when the spring term starts, instead of reporting to Mesa as a student, they report to the Police Department as interns. And for, for 2020, we have five interns that are scheduled to be placed out of Citrus Heights. So, this is, it's a very unique program, that it gives seniors an opportunity to experience things that undoubtedly a senior at any other public high school would likely not be able to take part in. In addition to learning the individual units that we'll, we'll assign them to, they also are exposed to several things, include the opportunity to attend sniper training with our SWAT team, defensive tactics training, every year we take them to the range with our explorers, the opportunity to hit the streets with patrol officers, all of it collectively is incredible, and we are very excited about the 2020 year. So, from last year's interns, we housed eight at Citrus Heights, and then after graduation, we are pleased to report two of the interns joined the US Marines, one joined the US Air Force, another left the area for college to go full-time, two stayed in our area, and they're full-time college students, and then two additional interns remained on as interns with our city. And they, these two also still serve as Police Explorers, they, they're working and going to college as well, so they're busy kids. For, for Youth and Family Services, one of the, one of our goals this year, there are several goals, but one of them was to bring Powell and Youth and Family Services into the 21st century. We wanted to create a website, and thankfully, it's still in progress, but we should be fully operational by the end of spring, maybe into early summer. This website will do several things. One, it'll allow, on the Police Activities League front, this website will allow parents to visit our site, and via an interactive calendar, view upcoming Police Activities League events, register their kid or their kids for the event, and then the, the website actually, it does a tremendous amount of logistical work on the backend that we would traditionally do, in that it generates a report for the event, as well as an active roster, and that we can print just before the event. So, we're really excited to get this rolling, especially for our, the Police Activities League side of the, of the equation for Youth and Family Services. The other piece of it, and there'll be several pieces, but the, one of the other noteworthy parts of this website when it's operational, will be the ability for a visitor to not only look and address everything that's Police Activities League-related, but also see everything else that Youth and Family Services does, and all the other programs that we have, everything else that we have to offer, an opportunity to see the individual officers that are in Powell, that are a part of Youth and Family Services, and we're, it'll be a very nice addition. We're excited to get this rolling. The, the 2019 Shop With A Cop was incredible. First off, before I begin to explain that, thanks to Citrus Heights Rotary, Walmart, Pepsi, Subway, and Assemblyman Ken Cooley's office, we were able to do several things that made this event incredible this year. Historically, for Shop With A Cop, our, the numbers of students participating ranged in low to mid twenties. With the contributions that we received this year, we were able to grow the number of students who participated in Shop With A Cop to 50, which is the largest in our agency's history. One of the things that we did that was very unique this year was a, a school would nominate a student, let's say for an example, out of Carriage Elementary, and then we would circle back via the school's databases and find that this original nominated student has a sibling at Sylvan and two at Mesa. And so, we were able to circle back and collect all the siblings of the original nominated student, and have them participate in this year's Shop With A Cop. So, that allowed us, in many cases, you know, with these large groups of four or five kids were shopping together, all siblings, so we had entire families really, that were able to participate in, in Shop With A Cop. It was incredible, and we're hoping that this number and this standard will continue on going forward. We are also super pleased and excited to announce that we have, three of our Police Explorers are active in the hiring process to become Community Service Officers, and integrating them out of the Explorer Program, and then into being part-time Community Service Officers, is the first step in the pipeline process for them to become full-time Police Officers with us. And we have a very unique opportunity in, in Youth and Family Services to, and as well as our, our Explorer Advisory Group, all collectively, we have the opportunity to develop and train and mentor our own homegrown, you know, next-generation police officers, our, our next-generation dispatchers, our next-generation professional staff. So, we are, we're very excited and fortunate to be a part of this program. And on the Police Explorer front.
In recognition of volunteering hundreds of hours for community events, supporting the Police Activities League, work in DUI checkpoints, and their performance in the competition, our Explorers Post was awarded the Chief Certificate of Recognition at the 2019 Awards Ceremony.
And another other noteworthy item on the Explorer front is, for 2019, we started a Police Explorer Honor Guard Unit. And having served in the Honor Guard Unit for several years, that's, it's challenging for sure. The training is difficult for officers, let alone Police Explorers. So, this Honor Guard Unit is, it's still in its infancy, training is still in progress, but in, in 2019, we did, our Police Explorer Honor Guard Unit posted their colors at the first event, so many more to come in the coming six to eight months, but we're incredibly excited about seeing our Police Explorers at community events posting colors.
The CHP Annual Explorer Competition's rapidly approaching in 2020 of April. Our goal is to bring home another pair of first-place trophies for 2020.
All right, and that is all that we have for you. Happy to answer any questions.
So, thank you. Let me just say, you know, from, first of all, Officer Chow, thanks for youth services. I mean, that, that's, you know, that was created last year, right? Or was it the year?
2018.
2018, okay, I was close. Officer Hancock.
Shamelessly.
Good for you for wanting to be a School Resource Officer. You know, one of the things, good and bad, that happens today is, you know, by having these School Resources, School Resource Officers at the high schools and other schools, it creates the relationships between the students and the officers, and, you know, you see what's happened across the country. And while, you know, they haven't made the news, we, we've had issues, nothing, no, you know, shootings or anything like that, thank God, but we've had instances where Citrus Heights Police Department, through the School Resource Officers, were able to solve a problem before it became a problem, based on the relationship they built with the students, contacted you, told, you know, things that were going on. So, it's a big commitment from the city's standpoint to have officers there full-time, but it, it pays off in spades with the relationships you build. So, thank you for that. It, it's an invaluable service, and love the fact that you've always wanted to do it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Questions, Jeanie?
Just a comment, you know, why don't you, or share how the Explorer Program has grown over the last few years?
It has. I think one of the things that contributed the, the growth of the Explorer Program is bringing it into a unit like Youth and Family Services, it becomes a priority, where previously it was more of an extracurricular activity for several different people. So, when we bring it under one roof in one unit, it gives us the opportunity to truly plug in to the program, and then expand it. And a lot of the, the expansion comes from our involvement in the schools, and the relationships that we build with the schools. I've lost track of how many times we've had students out of the blue approach me or approach Officer Hancock, "Oh my God, I have so many questions about the Explorer Program, can you tell me about it?" And then slowly, in, in time, as time passes, you know, they commit, they complete their application, we bring them in for interviews. A lot of word-of-mouth advertising on our end, and also from our own Explorers has helped grow the program tremendously. The partnership with San Juan Unified and the Public Safety Academy, and our ability to integrate the two, has also undoubtedly contributed to the growth of this program. So, we're still growing, we have, we have a little bit more room, we could fit a few more, I think, in the program.
Thank you. Brett?
Officer Hancock, San Juan or Mesa?
I'm actually at both schools, sir.
Both schools?
All 12, actually.
And then, are we only using one officer, or is that just temporarily, or are we just using one officer for both schools now, at the high school level?
We are in the process. I'm the only School Resource Officer right now, because Officer Jake is transitioning to another part of the unit.
Okay, well, I'll just comment on both then. And as a San Juan Spartan alumni, I'm going to hold you to a great challenge, but I know you're up for it.
I'm up for it, sir.
And then Mesa, a great principal over at San Juan, but I, I just haven't met her, but Mesa has an incredible principal, incredible principal, and, and great teachers. My son graduated from there, and, and we're looking forward to you doing a great job there, too.
Well, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Steve, anything you got? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
For your service as well.
Thank you.
Next item, Mrs. Van.
Next item is City Manager Items, and there are none. The next item is Items Requested by Councilmembers, Feature Agenda Items. We have item number 11, the subject is Kindergarten to College Education Program.
Welcome, Catherine.
Good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. Catherine Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager. The item before you tonight is regarding a topic that originated at the League of California Cities Conference. This last October, council members and staff members attended a kindergarten-to-college workshop that presented how cities can create savings accounts for students in kindergarten that can grow with them and be available for them when they go to college. And so, this was requested by council members to be put on an agenda for discussion. Basically, the most successful version of this program, or high-profile version of this program, is in San Francisco. The City of San Francisco spends about $900,000 annually to fund their program for 46,000 students in their school districts. It's also a strong partnership between the school district and the city. The school district administers sort of the, the student interface side of the program, while the city administers the financial part with local funding. So, that being said, Governor Newsom this year allocated funding in the state's budget, $25 million for programs similar to this program for statewide use. That being said, the state hasn't released a request for proposals yet for this program, and so, we don't have many details on what will be available, but we do know that it will require a local match of funding. And so, with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions or comments you may have.
I guess I was just wondering if there's a way to reward staying in Citrus Heights Schools through elementary, middle, and, and high school through this, or is it anybody who starts kindergarten here, even though they may go off elsewhere?
At lea-
That whole idea?
Yeah, at least in San Francisco's program, children have the option of retaining the savings account, even if they move into, say, another district, or they can close it. So, that's the option in the San Francisco program. Details at the state level have not been released, so I can't speak to that.
This is the first I've seen this, and I didn't go to the league this year. So, it's a rather large package, you know, I think it would be a good idea if we had an opportunity to read it, before really making meaningful comments, because I don't fully understand it at this point. From your brief description, it sounds as though it's a student savings account using city money. Is that correct?
Yes, and you have, you have the rather large packet because unfortunately, the league has not made the PowerPoint available on their website. The, the presenter at the session did not provide a PowerPoint. But, but basically, what it is, is that it's a locally-funded program, at least in San Francisco, and $50 is deposited in a child's account when they enter kindergarten, and if that child is on free and reduced lunch, then an additional $50 is placed in their accounts. And then at that point, the child has the option, and their family has the option, of contributing to that account to have it grow, and the city does private fundraising with local groups to provide matching incentives for any donation that the student might contribute to their account. But basically, the idea is that it's a savings account, it starts when the child's in kindergarten. But basically, the idea is that it's a savings account, it starts when the child's in kindergarten, locally-funded, and then it becomes available for them, should they choose to go to college.
Brett, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I mean, I see this as an opportunity to seed a savings account. So we, we put in the first 50, or whatever it is, and then the family grows the account. And so I want to make sure that the public understands that we're not going to, we don't have the resources to contribute to a fund for each child that lives in the city over years and years and years. But I also see it as a great opportunity to maybe find some partnerships. You mentioned some private funding and stuff like that. You know, we may even find somebody who wants to sponsor this program and, and whatnot. And so I think there's a great opportunity there. One of the things in attending this conference was that they showed, shared some statistics about the success of kids that do have accounts established early on in life, and how that contributes to their success as they hit those college years. And that's the goal. The goal is to, to see what we can do with a very minor contribution towards success. And one of the things I'd like to get back from you is the number of kids that currently live in Citrus Heights that started kindergarten this year. I met with Superintendent Kern of San Juan, and it was my understanding from talking to him that that would not be difficult to come up with. So that would kind of maybe give us a ballpark figure of what we would be looking at. That's if we decided it to be kids that live in Citrus Heights. Wherever they go to school, we may decide we want to do just the opposite, just kids that, that go to school in Citrus Heights, or the, or both. So, but I think if we had some sort of number we could kind of look at, and, and say, "That's kind of what we're looking at number-wise," then we might be able to decide, do we want to do that? Do we have the money to do that? Where's that money going to come from? And do, how, how much effort do we need to put in to some private partnerships in the effort then also? And I hope that we can get this put together by the time that school starts for next year's kindergartners.
Okay. So I, I don't want to put the cart before the horse here. I think that's fine, to get that number. But again, you know, it's a discussion item. I don't know how many pages of this, and Jeannie and I weren't, 133, weren't there to hear about it. Not saying it's not a good idea, but, you know, fixing potholes, solving the homeless problem, all that stuff, and it comes down to funding. So, yeah, I have no problem, you know, somebody making a phone call and just getting that number. But I, I'm not prepared to, not only not comment, but, and what I would suggest is, what's the date of our next retreat? Is it May or April?
April.
April.
Yeah, okay. So have that for then, and have a, a wholehearted discussion on it, because, you know, one of the things that we do here, in terms of, we set our six-months' goals, we give staff their direction, and this right here, this isn't just, you know, yeah, the phone call is, is one phone call, but it's putting together a program, working with the banks, you know, I mean, there's a lot of details here, and the funding of it. So I, I think we can get that, and maybe send that out. Jeannie and I can read this, but I, I'm not perfectly honest with you, I'm not prepared to make any comments on it, except when I hear there's a match, I get a little squeamish. Not that, you know, the young ones aren't worth the money, but, you know, there's a heck of a lot of things that the tax dollars need to go for in the city, so.
Just a couple of other thoughts I have, too.
Sure.
That, you know, as I'm hearing this, I'm all for savings. I remember when we were kids and we used to have little envelopes, and we'd make contributions to our savings account, but it came from us, you know. So along with, with this kind of a program, and I'm presuming it's, it's all in here, would be, what's the family going to do to help? And how are the kids going to be taught? You know, it's not just a matter of throwing $50 at a kid and watching it grow over 12 years, and to whatever it could be.
Sixty-two.
But, you know, huh?
Sixty-two bucks over 12 years.
Yeah. So, so I think there's, as Jeff said, there's got to be a lot more to this program to make it a viable program, rather than just, you know, giving a child $50 in kindergarten and waiting to see what happens when they're a senior, so. But, yeah, I will read this and appreciate you bringing it forward.
So Catherine, if you could, or have somebody get that one figure, Citrus Heights Kindergarten this year, and get back to us, then we can, you know, continue this discussion and see what we want to do. But I, I don't think there's any action here tonight, with having just got this and having read it.
It might be something, too, to kick out, to get discussion for the Education Committee.
Good, yeah, good point.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, for following up. And as the last item...
If there's any other items by council members or requests for future agenda items.
Jeannie?
I have one. So I've been, I alluded to this earlier this evening, but I've been working with the, the Community Outreach Director for the Rockland Academy of Schools, because they want to open a charter school in Citrus Heights called American River Collegiate Academy. And charter schools have to be, go before the local school board for approval, and that has happened. They were not approved by San Juan Unified, which, I was at that meeting, it was a very perfunctory decision. I think they made a huge mistake by not approving it. So it has now been appealed to the County Office of Education, and there will be a hearing and a decision on February 4th, and I, as well as others in the community, are going to be there to speak in favor of it. And so this evening, I think it's important that we have options in Citrus Heights for education for our students, and our, that live here. Not only because choice is a good thing, but we have so, by the, using the school superintendent's own figures, we have more kids of high school age enrolled in Plaster County Schools than we have at San Juan High School. And we need to stop that drain. And I think one way to do that is to offer more educational choices. And I think it'll bring the bar up for everybody. So with that, having been said, I would like to request that be put on the agenda for a letter of support, if it needs to be agendized, otherwise, we can do it by consensus that we, we support this effort by the Rockland Academy.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I hear you, and I think, I don't think any of us up here would disagree. Is this an item that we have to have a discussion, or is by consensus, we can have somebody?
No, I think you've, you've got to...
Agendize it?
Agendize it. Or if the mayor has the authority to do it on his own, as the mayor, he just can't act on behalf of the City Council.
Well, okay, but I'm asking that we, as a council, support this, as the chamber has already supported it, and as other...
So it sounds like it'd have a lot more weight.
So can we get it on the...
Can we agend, I'd like to agendize this.
We'd need to be agendized.
Yeah.
If we do it at the next meeting, we can do it in time for the hearing.
And it can be on the consent calendar.
Yeah, appreciate you keeping us honest. You're going to delay us, but that's okay. That's your job. So the next meeting, later in the month, we can still get it to the...
In time.
Down by the 4th. And you owe me a calendar invite for that meeting on the 4th.
Pardon me?
You owe me a calendar invite to remind me for...
I will do that.
Okay. All right. Anything? Brett?
Yeah, just to piggyback my comments earlier, and, and, you know, the two speakers that came and spoke passionately about the issues of homelessness, I am asking the, the second council member to join me in agendizing an item to explore amending our anti-camping ordinance as it relates to public property, and our nuisance abatement or related ordinances as it relates to the removal of camps or other property that poses a threat to the
So I'm not, I, I hear you. I just want to make sure I understand, to, to review the ordinance, or to see if we can strengthen it, and I'm just, I just want to be clear of it.
To explore amending our anti-camping ordinances.
To be in compliance with the law?
They've been neutered. They've been neutered.
You mean to be in compliance with the laws that's been established, or?
No, no, to see what we can do, not what we can't do. So what can we do with those ordinances to protect the city, the people that live in the city, the businesses? And that's our role. And so can we take that ordinance that basically now says you can't do anything, and do things that the government has always been able to do in, in, in regulating certain things as they relate to public health?
Let me ask. How do you imagine going through this? Would this be some, a task for our attorney to look at, and maybe make suggestions, or our police department?
I would not mind that, just be a starting point, definitely. Again, I'm looking for ways to protect people. I'm looking for ways to create boundaries for the nuisances that we are experiencing.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to suggest that perhaps we could start off by myself and key staff, just sitting down with Council Member Daniels, and hearing from him, we might have some of this underway, we might be able to get a better idea of what he's looking for, this is in all of our interests, so that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I'm, I don't know where to start. And again, you are talking a rabbit hole that needs, that's going to take a lot of work. And I just want to make sure, since we already have our goals set, that we gain agreement. So Brett, is that a fair place to start?
Absolutely.
Okay, I think that's fair.
I concur with that.
Good starting point.
Yep. Anything else for the rest of the council? All right, 8:18, not a bad hour and 18 minutes, so we will, we will go ahead and close first meeting of the year.
Thank you for the flowers, by the way.